State of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, infinite.
Okay, consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I say it.
Move it in seconded. Any discussion? But.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Foes.
Yeah.
Smith.
Yes.
Studiville.
Yes.
Tisdale.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Motion passed. Is there any patron input? No? Okay, four point uh, four point one, teaching and learning presentation.
Okay, we always have this topic on the board agenda every month during the school year. Uh, so put it back on and you're gonna hear from Mr. Tapp, the principals here in a little bit. Couple things, uh, from my standpoint, um, that we always have a theme and this year's theme is is strong. So four sixteen strong, and you'll probably hear some things from, uh, the principals and Dave talk about that as well. Uh, one thing I don't know if you've seen, but you know, our teammates program, which is our youth mentoring program, been in place for a long time now. Because my mentee, uh, is now gonna be a junior in high school and he was in fifth grade when I s- we started the program. But anyway, we went up to Lincoln, Nebraska, uh, for a state conference and we were chosen as the Kansas teammates chapter of the year. So if you haven't seen that or heard that, that's kudos. Uh, you know, Sarah McIntyre and Broadmore started it, but obviously going strong with the middle school and the high school as well. So, uh, always looking for, uh, people in the community, men and women, that want to give a little time to be a mentor. Um, you know, it's no, it's like many things, we usually have more kids than, uh, than we have mentors available. So, uh, but yeah, anyone watching wants to be a teammate. I know our counselors and social workers at the schools would love to talk to you guys about, uh, that program as well. So they're gonna have Mr. Tappin come up and start us off, uh, with a few, uh, things, um, in his realm.
Good evening. Thanks for, uh, having me. I've got just three or four things just to quickly go over. Um, first thing is today, our teachers headed over to Paola and joined their fellow colleagues from Osawatomie and Paola for a full day of professional development. Uh, we're just very excited to have our keynote speaker, Dr. Anthony Mohammed, come in and talk to our staff. And you know what? I think every, everybody got a little something different out of it. I think from my standpoint, the one thing that I kept hearing was accountability, that we need to hold ourselves accountable to make sure that what we're doing in one classroom is the same thing that's going on in the other classroom. And it doesn't necessarily take a, an administrator, whether it's Dr. Beerman or a principal in the building, to maybe work with those colleagues to make sure they're on the same page. It takes good relationships with those teachers, holding each other accountable. And so he did a lot of things talking about not only accountability, but communication and how to communicate appropriately when maybe we're not on the same page to move forward in the best interest of what we always need to be striving for. And that's that desk right there in front of you. What's in the best interests of students? There's a lot of things that we can do that are real easy for the adults, but it may not be in the best interest of the students. And part of that is engaging in those critical conversations and sometimes that, that's not, not easy to do. So I, I was really pleased with this message and I think our teachers got a lot out of that, uh, today. Last Monday and Tuesday, we welcomed sixteen new certified teachers to USD four one six. And, and I think Miami County Republic will have their picture in the paper and a little brief summary on each one of them, either on Wednesday this week or Wednesday next week. But with those sixteen new teachers to USD four one six, seven of them were brand new to the profession. So we have seven first year teachers onboard this year. And so they've gone through the mentor mentee, uh, training. So each one of them have a licensed teacher, most of them are at their grade level or in their subject area, if they're at the secondary level, that they went to either Gerard or Lawrence for a day of training, talking about how to work, work your way through that first year of teaching. And I jokingly say thirty-three years ago was my first year in a classroom. And if I could apologize to every student I had my first year, I would, because I think I was a much better teacher year two, three, and four than that first year. So, uh, excited to have them onboard. They spent a full day and a half with us. Uh, Jenny, Krista, and Katie, William all worked together to get them onboard with their technology, the human resource piece of the, of their job. Uh, Dr. Beerman took them on a tour of the district with Cindy Conrady in one of those new air-conditioned buses, so I know they appreciated that. But we talked about teaching licensure, their master negotiated agreement, uh, professional learning communities. So we threw a whole lot at them and as I told them, my goal was to give you a whole lot of everything, just enough so when your principals talk to you in a little more detail about it with their staff, you'll at least have an idea of what they were talking about. So hopefully that was successful for them as they are our new Wildcats to the Lewisburg, Lewisburg staff. Um, over the summer, we went through a KSD virtual audit. So as you know, we run a virtual program and KSD ran an audit to double check to make sure that, and I'm gonna kind of read it from, from the document they sent us. It was an audit to identify dropout diploma completion virtual students from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And so what they were looking for were students that may not have graduated with their class, but may have graduated a year or two after that class and how the funding works for those adult students. So adult student formula for, uh, classes, they get actually, the s- school district, we receive seven hundred and nine dollars per credit for those students rather than the full fun for funding formula that we're used to with our K through twelve students. So rather than receiving that five thousand plus dollars plus all the different areas from transportation, free and reduced, they get seven hundred and nine dollars. We went through that. They identified thirty-one students to review. And in a nice quick one sentence from our auditor, no exceptions were found in the nineteen and under virtual students reported for financial reimbursement. So kudos to our, uh, office staff at the high school for doing a good job. Kudos to Katie Delmas for working through the budgeting process. So the money that we received was accurate. They just had to do an audit to double check. So the last thing I wanted to share was a Circle Grove strong example. Dr. Beerman's theme this year is strong. And we have a new gym ceiling coming in. And when you're strong, you gotta be flexible and resilient. And it's gonna be ready and we're serving breakfast at seven AM on Wednesday morning for the first time ever out here at Circle Grove. And at six PM tomorrow night, they're gonna release the gym to us. So we are gonna be resilient and flexible and have that ready to serve breakfast to those three and four-year-olds on, on, uh, Wednesday morning. But that's just a shout out to the staff down that hallway who just got done hosting open house. So they got to see their three and four-year-olds for the first time and there was a lot of smiles and a lot of joy down that hallway. And Wednesday morning, it might be a little different. But we'll get them through the door and we'll have a great first day with those kiddos. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
Obviously, our high school is having back-to-school night right now, so I did ask, uh, Dr. Van Ryn to send some shout-outs and then we'll listen to the other principals. So, uh, they have five of those new sixteen staff members that Mr. Tappin just, uh, talked about. She shares, "Our new staff had an overwhelming, amazing week of training professional development. Takes a lot of hard work to be a champion." Champion is our building theme of the year. We are excited to see the impact they make with our students. I'm already proud of each of them. For our returning staff, status quo. They are amazing. They are already taking care of the beginning of the year business and are ready for students. Our KISA, which remembers our accreditation, uh, cycle goal for the district, is structured literacy. We had an awesome professional development with LMS led by Dr. Lori Curtis from the State Department. I feel we are off to a great start of learning. We're extending our professional learning, uh, committee, uh, learning today in Paola. I'm excited for the feedback from staff. Dr. Mohammed, as you just heard from Dave, is quite an inspiration. They're lucky to get to hear from him. We have so many people that have worked hard to make the start of school a good experience for students and for staff. LHS is a great place to be. I'm excited for this year. So that's what she wanted to share. And Dr. Hankins, if you wanna come up and share a few great things that are going on at the middle school already.
I'll pull my phone out because I have something I wanna read. Um, so I'm gonna go along with the, um, this is from today. I'm gonna go along with the theme of, um, our new staff. And there is something super cool about our new staff members. There's, I say five, one came from, came up from Broadmore. But the energy and the vibe and the culture in our building right now, I think is rocking. And I, I saw this, um, quote today by Dr. Mohammed and I wanna read it because when I think of strong and this kind of made me think of it. Um, this is by, uh, from a book, um, called The Culture of Code, The Secrets of Highly Successful People. It says, "While successful, culture can look and feel like magic. The truth is that it's not. Culture is a set of living relationships, working together toward a shared goal. It's not something that you are, it's something that you do." And this is what we are embodying right now. It, it's just awesome. Um, new teachers, I think, are, especially we have one that's brand new and man, he's excited, he's worried. And I'm like, if you're worried, you're doing the right thing. So he's up there every day. I mean, I was up there in July when I shouldn't have been up there and he's up there in July when he shouldn't have been there. So I've just been really good about it. Um, we're, we're doing again our, um, math on Thursday mornings. We're do- we just have everything, it's just coming together, I feel like. And this, this is year, year three for me. And, um, you know, year, year one, brand new, year two, um, writing dissertation and crazy. And year three, I just feel like it's gonna be the best year yet. Our sixth graders got, um, most of them got all of their signs. There's a couple hiccups here and there, but we're getting all the signs that we need to. So hopefully you're driving around town and you're seeing them and kids are excited. Um, yeah, a couple staff members are like, oh, you know, I saw some kid, they're so excited. I'm like, did you get the picture? No, we forgot. But, um, I have a couple pictures, um, if you have any that you wanna share as well. I know a couple of you. Uh, but kids have been up in, in the building, looking at their lockers. So I think we're off to a great start. Energy and culture is our strongest. Our, our theme is, uh, be strong, be you. If you see any tweets, we hashtag that. And we wanted to go along with the strong theme and our BLT came up with that. Um, so we really like it. Off to a great start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. It has been a strong and fast start to the school year. Um, this the, this year, our theme is blast off into learning and we're doing everything space. And in kind of getting ready for that, we saw that NASA's motto is for the benefit of all. So we kind of talked a lot about how everything that we do is really for the benefit of all. And that was a theme with Dr. Mohammed today too, is just working with all students and ensuring that all students are, are, um, you know, uh, reaching high potential. So, um, our summer, summer work on ELA and PLCs have contributed to our staff having strong commitments to the student learning and our staff growing, um, in their craft as well. Um, our enrollment at Broadmore is strong. We, um, lost thirteen students, um, this year to moving to different districts. Uh, but we gained thirty new Wildcats to our building. So our enrollment right now is right at three hundred eighty-seven students in building. That includes our thirteen students in the Level Two program. And then we also serve an additional four students virtually and we, uh, so that four is divi- divided up there. Um, every year I say it, our maintenance crew, they're so awesome and strong and kind of keeping with your theme. Um, they have done a great job. Doug and Kelly helps lead them to make everything look great. Um, when we are giving those new Wildcats tours, they always talk about how incredible our facilities look. Um, I in fact, I'm looking at this like, is this building brand new? It's like, no, no, it's from nineteen seventy-seven. But, um, it's just, they always talk about like how good everything looks and I just, that pride, you know, makes us strong. We're also fully staffed. So that helps because we just feel confident and strong when we have everybody in the places they need to be. Um, our back-to-school professional development has been centered around making our processes stronger too. Um, we had teamwork around our PLCs. We looked at ways to, um, improve our math with Dr. Brian Poncy. He is from Oklahoma State University and he's really, um, influential in the Kansas Math Project. Um, he presented to both Rockville and Broadmore. We also had a presentation, um, from Family Services, the Division of Family Services, uh, just about, um, helping us feel more, more confident when we have to have difficult conversations and, and, um, maybe even make reports to get families the help and support they need. Um, and then today, today was just amazing. Um, the Miami County PD Day. Um, you know, we were fortunate to get that grant from First Option to help bring Dr. Mohammed here. And, um, you know, it was great, like, hearing, um, different people from, like, different districts. When Jeff Hines came up and was like, you're right, like, that was really awesome. Like, I know, you could just listen to him all day. He just gives you ways to, to, you know, improve. Um, I had a teacher tell me before I came out here that, she's like, gosh, kinda called me out on some things. As I was listening to him, I was like, I need to be better at that. I need to be better at that. And I was like, yeah, me too. You know, I was like, that's what makes us stronger, honestly. I mean, not to be cheesy, I've been cheesy with all the strong, but really, that is what makes us stronger is, you know, having moments like that where we can really reflect and see like what, what we need to do. Um, so it was awesome. We are ready to blast off. We have six, um, new staff members. Um, and then, uh, we have Tracy McCombs has moved into the title position and Bobby Bavard into our gifted position. And so we're excited for, um, all the, all the new stuff around Broadmore. We're ready to blast off.
Gonna keep going strong, right? So our theme this year is be the hero of your story, helping everyone, respecting others. Heroes have to be strong, so it fit really well. Um, I am super excited to stand in front of you tonight and tell you we are fully staffed. I think the last two years, every time I've stood in front of you, I've said, we are short paras. I am short, fully staffed. I'm very excited. Uh, it's worth celebrating. It's a strong foundation for our student success. So I really appreciate our new, uh, hiring program, Red Rover. I think that has been helpful. So kudos to HR, Kristen Copeland and, and the district and, you know, kind of changing that up. Um, our ELA resource pilot amplify CKLA, we are gonna start that basically from day one. We're going to have a half-year pilot, which will really give our teachers time to look at it, to see if it's a, a resource we want to adopt. So I'm super excited about that. They had training on the fifth. We have two teachers per grade level that will be piloting that. And so they had three hours, so they are ready to go. And we're quite excited for, um, that pilot resource. Um, we are going to have increased PE opportunities this year. So we are going to have a five-day, um, block schedule in A through E and they are gonna go to PE four out of the five days. So I'm super excited about that, um, as well as the fact that when Ms. Mills has them in the afternoon during their block, she will have each class separately on their own, so it is a great time for her to teach standards. And then when we have, we have kind of a PE plus time, then she'll have two classes at that time. And so then they can practice those standards. So I'm, she's thrilled and I'm thrilled. Um, we have really been working a lot on our, uh, PLC process and we worked on building our team commitments. Um, so we've looked at building wide commitments, working as one to ensure student growth. Uh, we had a building, strong staff connection. So we kicked off the year with a social to build those relationships and strengthen our team culture. Um, Lisa Reese wanted me to tell you that technology support is, um, really being met smoothly. She's really thankful for, uh, K twelve. That's a different story this year than we had last year, so that's a huge improvement. Um, facility improvements, brand new flooring in our hallways. Um, it looks really good. Great pop of color, that purple on the side. So looks really great. And of course, um, we were super excited to attend the PD today with, um, Miami County as well. Um, and it really piggyback on those building, those, uh, building-wide commitments. So I am super excited to kick off this year. Um, it feels good to be in year three. Um, we're just manifesting, um, a great start and an amazing year for our students and staff.
Okay, four point two, needs assessment review.
Okay, um, as you guys know, throughout the budgeting process, uh, the needs assessment is always brought to the, the board table, uh, just for continual review. Um, and it will be again, um, brought up next month as you guys are looking to approve the budgets, uh, as well. So wanna always put it in front of the board, see if there's any additional comments or questions, um, and so not necessarily asking for any additional changes. I think we've, uh, discussed it a lot and are ready, but just wanna make sure, uh, to see if there was any other additional comments.
I love hearing from both elementary teachers that were fully staffed. That definitely plays, that's normally a conversation from around the needs assessment. So it's good to hear that.
Are we fully staffed on bus drivers too?
We are, actually. It was a really good, uh, bus driving, uh, hiring season, whether it worked having the bus out there. But, you know, Dave and Jared, uh, this year they dressed as, uh, they always surprise the staff. So last year they were the Wildcats, this year they were drum majors on Wednesday. And then they turn around and introduce. And it's the most I think I've ever heard Mr. Tappin introduce bus drivers, maybe five or six. Uh, yeah. So yes, we are. In fact, Cindy Conrady told me the other day, she doesn't think she'll have to drive every day, which, you know, we really don't want that position to have to be driving. I mean, she's a director and can be a sub, but obviously her job should be tending to all the things that can come up during routes in the day. So, uh, hopefully that continues. But, uh, yes, because we have a lot of special day, uh, routes that take a lot of staff members too. But yes.
I was surprised to see that many.
Yeah. Yeah, that's an anomaly. So, but kudos to you. I mean, you know, we provided bus drivers a raise. And then if you remember last year midstream, you guys had us raise the rates again. And then after negotiations, they received another one. So I think compensation hopefully helped as well. And air conditioning, that's just, let's hope that helped as well.
Where did we, this is a little bit off topic, but where, where did we come in on?
The numbers are extremely low. Um, and, uh, so I plan in September to make sure, you know, because we still have some kids we haven't heard from. And so sometimes we don't hear from those students until a day or two into school. And also sometimes even though we've put out as much information about enrollment, and I know it's even been on Facebook and people are sharing, Broadmore and Rockville say, please enroll. We'll have students show up on Thursday morning. And, uh, so in September, um, I'll definitely have better numbers. That won't be our audited numbers because that'll be before September twentieth. But right now, I mean, I think, and we have five teachers, so they definitely have great class sizes. But it's gonna be the smallest, I thought, I, last year was a very small class. That, we're in the eighties. Uh, it's been a very long time. In fact, some people around this table that were Lewisburg Wildcats probably graduated with more kids in their class than that. But what is it, Janil? Eighty-three?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. So extremely low, you know, and, and first grade is only in the nineties. And so.
We actually gained some, um, first graders. So we're right around ninety-seven, um, ninety-eight for first grade. And we've, um, had some incoming second graders as well. So we're about a hundred and eight. So we've, we've increased in first and second.
But I'll have those numbers. But just on that, you know, so Cindy says Broadmore is about, say, three hundred eighty kids and Rockville's only around three hundred. And so, you know, that's, you know.
Do we know of other surrounding districts of their kindergarten, like Paola, like, is anybody today? I guess you guys are all together. Where are they at?
Yes, they are.
You know, Spring Hill obviously would be higher, uh, but.
Hill and Osawatomie, they're lower.
Yeah, lower numbers as well.
So they're.
So we're gonna have to just continue to monitor that for many reasons, uh, staffing, budgets. But I'll have a little better handle on those numbers, uh, at the September, I'll meet you.
Maybe next, she'll be in.
Yeah, next year I get the COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah, well soon.
We'll see. Okay, uh, five point, uh, five point, actually, items five point one, approval of Vision twenty thirty-five that's presented.
Okay, as you guys know, uh, we started out, uh, the twenty twenty-five, uh, year. So in January, I'm talking about updating Vision twenty twenty-five. We've had a lot of stakeholder meetings. We've had a lot of internal and external stakeholder input. Uh, we've had a lot of discussion, uh, even last month. And so, uh, in, uh, talking to Jim and Jennifer when setting the agenda, they thought it was probably time to bring it to the board, not just for discussion, but to move it into action. So that's why you see it as an action item. Um, and, uh, I know from last time, uh, two new icons, uh, surry, so hopefully those are okay. A period on the one, uh, the, uh, offer professional development and technology for all staff. Uh, that was, I know, Joe Aaron, you added that one and I forgot the period at the end and Jennifer caught that. So I've tried to get everything on there, but, uh, and this has already been shared in draft form. I know our, my principals, our principals have asked for it, uh, but I've told them that's still drafted until the board approves it. But, um, so I'm open to any other conversations or additions, but if not, then there'll be a motion to approve this.
No. Yeah, I like the, everything. I think there could just aesthetically, like, looking at it and reading it. I think just like some of the spacing, um, just, everything's really tight. Just looking at it from like a.
Well, I've noticed that too, right there where the portalies are.
Down below ends negative space or, I don't know.
I'm sure it's hard to do given the size of it, right?
Uh, I know, I think we could approve it, but then still tweak it to make it just.
Is this, this isn't typically printed though, right?
Yeah, it's on our website. Um, yeah, I mean, not a lot. Obviously, if it's approved, then you can see that means that's when it will be updated.
I guess I'm just thinking, I mean, i- if we were sticking to a size that was, you know, eleven and a half by, or eight and a half by eleven, rather. I mean, if, if it's not something that's gonna be printed on a regular sheet of paper, then maybe you could make it a little bigger and, and give it a little more space.
Yeah, I could try to, you know, obviously put it on eleven by seventeen and that would.
I brought you another stack of paper today, so we can, we can do that.
And that's honestly, you know, why, in fact, you can see the goals are maybe a lot a little bit bigger than the target areas. I was just running out of room and not being a, uh, a major that does this, um.
Me, dude. What, uh, something.
Uh, that's just my, that's just PowerPoint. Yeah. So.
Right, I like the way we streamlined it, the additions and the deductions.
The information is what we're approving really, right?
Yeah, I think we've proven the information and just, we can just aesthetically make it a little easier to read. You don't say it just. That makes sense, okay.
But I do appreciate all the input. I, I think we had some, I know, it's a really good conversations, uh, regarding it. Um, and I thought all conversations, um, were all focused, yeah, on students and, and getting our district.
Yep.
In the right direction.
I like what we've seen, what we have there.
You know, and Lanny and I, I think you've been the only one on the board, uh, that, we should add twenty, Vision twenty twenty-five. We thought that was gonna be a long time. Here we are. So I don't know, any of us will be around the table in twenty thirty-five, but whether we're not or not, or we are, it's gonna, twenty thirty-five will be here before we know it. I guess, sure, twenty twenty-five snuck up on us quickly.
Do we, uh, motion approve?
Can we motion approve it and then, I mean, I'll, we're approving the content, right?
Right. I mean, it could be tweaked.
Yeah, I mean, just like, just spacing and.
Yeah. Yeah.
And maybe, obviously, I can share with the visual arts classes at the high school. Maybe, uh, they have a, you know, the programs that you guys purchase on the computers are a lot better than Brian said on the PowerPoint. So maybe I can share this with our, our class up there and they can come back. Same content, but make it look, have a lot more pizzazz than I can do.
I move to approve the Vision twenty thirty-five content as presented.
Then move it in seconded. Any further discussion? But.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Foes.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Studiville.
Yes.
And Tisdale.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
No, I have to say, I, I'm really proud of what we accomplished here. We did it a lot faster than we thought we would too, right? I mean, I think we were thinking maybe wintertime, we would have a final, so good job.
By the time twenty twenty-five is over, right?
Right, right.
Well, we had, I mean, I thought we had really good success with community engagement and staff and everything, so.
Yeah, I agree.
It was really good.
Okay, five point two, approval of the publication of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school district budget.
Okay, what's, uh, was in the pack and what Jenny has on the board is Code Ninety-nine, what is presented, uh, to the patrons, uh, and published in, in the, in the. Okay, what's uh, was in the pack and what Jenny has on the board is code ninety-nine, what is presented uh, to the patrons uh, and published in, in the, in the paper. It'll be published uh, on Wednesday, August twentieth. Uh, that'll allow well over two weeks uh, for it to be uh, noticed uh, in the paper before the September eighth meeting. On September eighth and then some announcements, but it's also on code ninety-nine, is there'll be two hearings on September eighth. The first hearing is the revenue neutral hearing, uh, and that'll be at six PM, um, here, it's over Grove. And then uh, the board will need to take action before that hearing is over, whether to exceed revenue neutral or not. Then that hearing is closed and then the budget hearing, so at the very top of code ninety-nine, that's why it says six ten. If the revenue neutral hearing goes longer, then um, you know, it'll be uh, whenever the first one's over. If for some reason the revenue neutral hearing is shorter than that, we still can't have the budget hearing before six ten as well. So all that's noticed uh, in code ninety-nine, at the top talks about the budget hearing, on the second page, uh, is the revenue neutral hearing that talks about it at six o'clock, uh, as well. So this is just a motion to publish the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. And then the hearings uh, will be on the eighth and the budget approval hearing will be on September fifteenth.
I move to approve resolution eight one one twenty five.
Oh, that's the next.
Oh, that's, that's sorry. I moved to publish the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget as presented and discussed in the Miami County Republic on August twentieth.
Move it in seconded. Any further discussion? Put.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Bose.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Studiville.
Yes.
Tisdale.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, now five point three, uh, approval of the resolution eight one one two zero two five for the softball lease purchase.
Okay, uh, in the board packet is the resolution that uh, Ms. Yoder is pulling up. Uh, with also the ballot language, and so uh, we worked with our, our legal counsel. Um, and on the resolution and as well as the ballot language, so uh, the ballot language is at the bottom. Also, uh, pertaining to this, uh, as I've shared with you, First Option, yeah, so there is the actual ballot language that will be on the ballot. We will send this uh, to uh, the county clerk, uh, so Laura Ev can have this uh, by her deadline. And uh, but we know First Option is good, holding uh, their interest rate. Legacy Sports Construction was good withholding their uh, the, the artificial turf rate. And so Hollis Miller uh, was working with Sands Construction. They were the low bidder on the uh, the civil side, the bulk of it. And we did hear back from them and I do have that information. I, I thought the board would wanna see that, so uh, there's two documents here. So the, I'll wait till everyone has it. And I just received this on Friday. So the top, the eleven by seventeen sheet you've seen, when you guys approved this, uh, you, you, you saw all this information. The littler document is what Sands provided, so um, by holding off construction uh, until November, uh, you can see that they have escalated their costs of roughly a hundred thousand dollars. And then on the eleven by seventeen, that's what I have shared there on the right side. So the original cost of the total project was three million nine hundred ninety-six thousand five ninety-two point thirty-nine. Uh, then if you add this hundred thousand two twenty-four and seventeen cents, you get four million ninety-six thousand eight sixteen fifty-six. Does not change the lease purchase, that'll still be four million, as it says up here, uh, the first option. Uh, if this is passed by the voters, then uh, we will need to, through capital outlay, come up with the additional ninety-six thousand eight sixteen fifty-six. But I did wanna share this. You can see they're escalating charges uh, on that eight and a half by eleven sheet and what that comes up to as well. I honestly didn't know, I'm not in construction. Uh, you know, you hear how much construction costs are going up and so, not that I wanted to see any, but with about four million, you know, I was worried that it could potentially be four hundred thousand, ten percent. So it's roughly two and a half percent. Uh, so I thought that that was actually, okay, like I said, did I want any? No, but it wasn't when, you know, when I got this document and was pressing open, I was worried what it was gonna say. Uh, but uh, I actually didn't think it was too bad, so I appreciate Sands trying to hold their lines the best. Probably one of the biggest savers for us is line twelve, so Musco lighting, you can see, they held their original bid. That's a big cost, uh, the lighting, and there's no additional cost. So number twelve, sports lighting, uh, that is Musco lighting, that's what we have at the current football and soccer stadium. They held, they'll, they'll let their line and so, or we would have probably seen an additional increase. So uh, I do appreciate Musco lighting and Sands went back then saying that they're good, as you can see, as long as it's ordered by November thirtieth of holding that, so.
And it would be the same type of lighting at the football stadium.
Yes, and it's what was originally in the specs, so.
There's, they're still loaded in, even with their increases.
Yeah, and so, you know, I was, I was, you can see, um, uh, so you had, uh, Crossland was second and then Legacy Sports Construction, Legacy is obviously getting the uh, synthetic turf. Uh, but yes, they are still, even with this, lower than Crossland Construction.
And they probably would have an increase at this point.
Yeah, but that was one thing that I was thinking back in my mind was if they would have come in higher than, you know, I'd had a, I don't have to now, but would we check with legal and, and see, do we go with the second or third bidder, do we have to rebid it? But they are still the low bidder, uh, on this, so, um, but I did wanna share those uh, as part of tonight's conversation.
Do we, do we have any expenses that'll be outside of these numbers?
Uh, the only additional one, because we've already paid our professional fees, uh, will be to move that box with Everji, so there's the green box out in the outfield, uh, the baseball field. And that has to be moved and into the parking lot, uh, and we are doing that separately. Uh, but, so they gave us a price of roughly a hundred thousand. I prob, I need to get with Everji and see what that price is going to be. That parking lot on the south, so on the staff parking lot, so I don't have a visual to show you, but that's, we're gonna lose a few stalls on that. That civil work though, is in here, uh, so the only additional cost is Everji coming out and moving that box uh, with Sands. Uh, I do have a quote from uh, Everji, but I need to make sure and see if that's still.
We went over that at, at two, or our last meeting when we talked about capital.
Oh yeah, I mean, we've factored that in.
It was one of them.
Yeah, but I do need like this to see when they gave me that quote several months ago, if it's still good for November. So I will get that as well and make sure, I mean, since you asked that, if Hollis and Miller, MKC, uh, and Smith and Boucher are three professionals, if they feel like they have any more additional fees as well, so I will get that. Those would be the only ones I could think of. Uh, I believe we've fully paid them uh, for their work. I don't think extending this is gonna cost more, but I will definitely get you that answer for Hollis and all the professionals and then the uh, Everji. And there, I mean, so there's the ballot language, um, Wayne Mundorf, uh, this entire resolution and that ballot question, um, so when I say legal, I did not uh, visit with KSB, Wayne Mundorf. This resolution and uh, language.
When do we have to submit to the killing?
Um, good question, I, I don't wanna tell you. I think we're still like a month. No, not a month, I think it was September. I think statute says September one or September second, and but then there's Labor Day there, so I know we would not have been able to do this next month. But it's either September first or second, don't quote me, but Labor Day is right there, so. I don't know if she even told me the, the Friday before, but uh, I know by doing it tonight and sending it to her.
It was sixty days, what matters.
Yeah, then I think statute says something about September first or second. I think that's right, September first, but that's on Labor Day. So then I think, I think she shared with me that I would need to give it to her by uh, Tuesday, September second.
I move to approve resolution eight one one two zero two five as presented.
Seconded. Move it in seconded and any further discussion? Put.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Bose.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Studiville.
Yes.
Tisdale.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Make it all the way to the end of the paragraph to see that it's coming out of capital outlay and not additional increasing of the mill.
Uh, six point O announcements.
Uh, I kind of had shared though, but just, uh, just to recap, so our revenue neutral rate hearing uh, will be at six o'clock on September eighth. That is, uh, and then the budget hearing will be following that approximately six ten or whenever we get through the revenue neutral rate hearing. Uh, then the regular board meeting will follow, uh, and then the following week, September fifteenth, the board will call a special meeting to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget.
I know.
Okay, seven point O.
I move to adjourn the August eleventh, twenty twenty-five regular Board of Education meeting at six forty.
Record.
Move it in seconded. Any further discussion? Put.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Bose.
Yep.
Smith.
Yes.
Studiville.
Yes.
Tisdale.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I mean, starting out even strong.